You think about the times that Moses met God, you know, he met him at the burning bush. There's no reference to him of having his face shine, none whatsoever. He climbs the mountain multiple times, comes back down. There's no reference any time of his face shining in any of those times. Six different times he climbs the mountain and there's no reference of his face shining any of those times. One of those times, if you study this, study it out, he climbed the mountain with his elders, climbed halfway up the mountain and it says they ate lunch with God. They ate, you know, they basically sealed the covenant there, up there on the top. And it even says Nate Abinabaiu were there, you know, at this very place, you know? And these are the guys who, you know, did strange fire and all those other things, right? But what's interesting about it is, is it wasn't until the seventh climb, the seventh climb of Moses, where you actually see him come down and his face is shining. And you wonder what exactly was different about that climb? Well, the climb is where he comes out and this is the time he says he really wanted to see God. And he talked about, I want to see God. Before he's like, he climbed up to God, he entered the cloud. You know, you read the different things of how he climbed, he did this, did that, and this is. But this is the one time that he says, I really want to see you, God. And so what did he see? Did he really see God? No, really what he saw was he got a revelation of God's character. And he started to understand God's character because it says, "The Lord God, the Lord God merciful, gracious, long-suffering, abounding in goodness and truth, keeping mercy for thousands, forgiving." And you've all read that. That's when he comes down from that mountain and that's when his face was shining. It's when he truly saw a picture of God and the, and the character of Jesus Christ. A character of God, you know, Trinity Jesus, whatever you want to call it. They didn't know the name Jesus at that moment, but. And so I think it's interesting, you know, all those other times he's actually climbing, 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 and he's doing God's will. He's trying to follow what God tells him to do. So I'm not saying he wasn't, but it was when he truly started studying and started really understanding the character of God that you see his face to shine. And I think there's something there for us to learn as we begin this new week here on this Sunday. Is to keep climbing, keep looking for that character of God, keep looking for what God is wanting to, to show us about himself and then be, be the shining people out in the community where we go and where we live. So that's just my little challenge for you as you, as we begin this little meeting here tonight. Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for being our God, for how much you love us and care for us. Thank you for showing us your character. And thank you for showing us who you are. And, and Lord, we need to see more and more of that every day. And Lord, help us to be reflectors of that as well, in Jesus's name, amen. So tonight I just want to share, we're going to have four presentations. You're welcome to raise your hand at any time, ask questions. We may have the answers, we may not. So if we don't, we'll say we get back to you. So we're going to share just some four presentations about different aspects of the conference. And, and then we'll, there's always time for questions as well after each presentation or any time in between. So just feel free, I want to make sure you know that. So my presentation, I'm just going to talk a little bit about, and this one does not work. It was working two seconds ago. Hit the slide and make it go to the next one. I can't even make the right sounds, right? I'm hitting the next button. There we go. Now we're going to go to the next one. Anyway, there we go. This, just a little bit about our mission statement. It says, "We are to reach Western Washington with a distinctive Christ-centered message of hope and holiness, encouraging all to be, become fully devoted disciples of Jesus." That's our mission statement that we've been operating under for probably about 15 years now. And let me see if this is working now. Oh, look at that, it worked. "Our vision is to create an environment that reflects, encourages the reflection of Christ in every member, ministering together to reach communities with the everlasting gospel of Jesus Christ and His soon return." And it worked again. And there's our core values that we try to operate by. Value seeing others through the eyes of Jesus, value reaching lost people, godly character, excellence, transparency, and integrity, and spiritual growth and discipleship. So my part of the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about two areas of emphasis that we've had over the past few years. And I want to start clear back in 2019 because the two areas of emphasis that I'm going to talk about have to do with church revitalization as well as church planting. And the reason I want to talk about those two things, I'll show you some dashboards that have been developed by the North American Division. And we have been, that's a starting point for our, for our discussion. And so we've been using those dashboards as a starting point. And so I'm going to share those dashboards with you at this point. Because back in 2019, they had these dashboards that showed, and they started studying this division-wide as well as by individual churches and all these kinds of things, having to do with churches that were in decline, who were, that were plateauing, or that were growing. And there's actually a fourth category that didn't even show up in our conference in 2019 called multiplying. And the multiplying is a church that has planted another congregation within the last few years. A declining church is any church that has zero baptisms or zero growth in attendance, or if they have both, it's a declining church, okay? A plateauing church, it can have one or the other, but it's just plateaued, kind of not doing anything, staying the same. And a growing church is any church that has grown by the minimum of 2% in attendance as well as 2% in baptisms of their attendance. So if you have 100 people in attendance, you baptize how many? Anybody good at math? Two, that's right. So you baptize two, which is a fairly low bar if you have two, 100 people in attendance, just to be really honest. So that's the bar, but that's the bar that they started with. And they said, that's where we're going to start as the, in the, in the, in the thing. So back in 2019, we said, hey, let's really start looking at this. The NAD says, "We want all conferences to look at this." And we said, "We need to look at it," especially when you look at the fact that 68% of the churches in the Washington Conference at that time were statistically in decline. We should not be happy with that, should we? I mean, I don't think we should be happy with that. So we started working on it and guess what happened in 2020? It went the other way because guess what? We had this thing called a pandemic and so we had 83% of our churches went into decline. Now, I'm going to, I'm not going to make an excuse for that, but I am going to say that part of that has to do with the fact that we were not counting in the same way in 2020. We weren't counting, you know, who was watching online and everything. We're still trying to just, you know, we weren't really worried about counting, so to speak, at that time. And so that's what was taking place. So it's not good, but I do believe that some of it was just a matter of counting processes as well. But that's what happened in 2020. But we said still, even during the middle of a pandemic, we've got to keep moving. We've got to figure out how can we do better as far as churches that are in decline? 2021, it went to 66% in decline, all right? And that's what we're saying. And so during this whole process, we said, we're going to come up with a number of different things. And I'm going to show you, talk about those in just a minute. But we really started focusing on, we put together a beta test that we did with three different churches, tried to see what was happening with those churches. All three of those churches went from a declining church to a growing church in the very first year. And then we, we kind of tweaked it a little bit and we, and we took another 10, we said, we're going to do another 10 churches. And we took 10 churches and all of those churches went from declining church to a growing church within the first year. Okay? So we've had, we have this plan that we put together through Tyler Long, who is our church revitalization guy. And other churches have done other plans, which is fine. There, there's no requirement to follow this plan. And they have come out of decline as well. And part of it happens to do with also, we've come out of the pandemic as well. So that's helped it as well. But, so here's what happened in 2022 is it went from 66 to 45% churches in decline. Can somebody say amen? Ain't that cool? Now, having said that, 45% is still kind of a scary number. You know, we still wish that we, you know, one of my prayers is that every one of our churches was a growing church. And that's what I told people publicly, that I would love to see all of our churches being growing, mainly because I believe that the Gospel Commission says that's what we're supposed to do, right? And the other thing is, is you see that we've added a church, we've added 6% of our churches are now in the multiplication and that they've also been working on planting churches as well. So 39% went to growing, 10% plateauing, and 45% in decline. So let's take a look at what the division is doing and the NAD at the NPUC. So if you take a look at the NPUC, in 2022, they had 55%, is that right? 55% of the churches in decline multiplying 2%, growing 33, and plateauing 10. So that's what happened in the NPUC in 2022. Here is, the NAD is 52, 74, I mean, multiplying 1, 36% for growing and 11% plateauing. So we're actually beating the average of both the union and the division, which I think is also, also very good. So we're helping to lower their average, or raise their, no, lower their average as well. So those are some things that we, those are the, those are the dashboards that we have that we've been following for the last number of years. And let me just talk a little bit about what we've done now to, to try to, you know, bring this around and as offered to our local congregations. It's first of all, we've offered church board coaching to where we bring either Tyler or someone that comes in and we'll coach a church on, here's some steps that you can take to reverse the slide. We actually, every pastor now, and every church clerk for that matter, can actually log on to E-Adventist and they can look it up and they can look very easily, is my church in decline or is it a growing church? It, it hits right there. Every church can look this up on E-Adventist and it'll tell you automatically what, where your church falls in regards to that. So we've, we've said, hey, if your church is in decline, here's some things that we would suggest. One of the things is a metric that, that a number of churches are used. It's run out of Andrews University, it's called natural church development. It's very interesting that people who have followed that, if they do nothing else, nothing else but follow that and they do it for the, for a minimum of three years, but 86% of those churches will reverse the slide and become a growing church if they do nothing else but that one thing, which is, which is called natural church development and follow that. And we, we have, we have actually certified coaches in that that can help you with those areas. We have, we've increased our prayer initiatives. Pastor Randy, who's our prayer, our VP of Administration as well as our prayer coordinator. We've had a number of prayer initiatives, seeking the Holy Spirit, encouraging family worship, encouraging marriage and, and those types of things as well. And that is something that has been really ramped up over the last number of years. We've also really invested heavily in our youth and club ministry, our children's and family ministry. We have, you know, I was just told by somebody the other day, it says, "We have one of the best in the North American Division in our youth department." And so I'm like, hey, glad to know that. And this was somebody that knows the division as well as different unions. And he was talking to me about this as well. But there's, these are areas that if our, if our children want to come to church, guess who they bring with them, right? They bring the, they bring the older people with them. And when I was doing youth ministry, a guy told me, if the kids like you, the parents don't have a choice, right? And so, so, you know, there's some, you've got to take that with a grain of salt, but that's, that's one of the things that's out there. We've also expanded our health ministries and really tried to say, our goal of our health ministries director is to try to have a health ministries director for every church. And this year she's been training 15 different church leaders from different churches so they can go back to their church and run health ministries. And we really duly believe that it's one of the ways to reach our community, then let's train people and know how they can do that. Community service ministry is something that we saw a number of churches that really took off. Some churches were already doing it, other churches said, hey, during the pandemic, we're going to really, you know, bump that up. It's really interesting, the churches that did that, you know, they, they had people starting to come to church because they said that church is making a difference in their community. We've had that testimony over and over and over again. One of the churches started doing, you know, health clinics and all this kind of stuff. They found out they weren't necessarily baptizing people that came to the health clinics, but they were baptizing people that were helping at the health clinics, which was really interesting. And then, then we also, you know, one thing that's not so much church revitalization, except for it does involve people that they know that the local churches. We have a Hope House that opened up even during the pandemic. And I was just talking to the director of it. The Hope House is a place for transitional housing for those who are coming out of incarceration. They have to follow a certain number, we're one of two in the North American Division right now in regards to this. And so, you know, they can come out, they have to learn how to pay, pay rent to this place and they have to be there on a certain night, time of the day. They have to hold down a job, all these kinds of things to help them get re-introduced back into society. Those are all some things we've done. I'm not going to talk about Adventist education because that has really grown in the last number of years, but Michelle will talk about that in a little bit. But having said that, one of our philosophies of Adventist education has been that Adventist education isn't just about our 21 schools, which are important. It's about the family, it's about family worship. It's about what happens in our Sabbath schools around the conference. It's what happens in our club ministry. All of that is part of Adventist education. And I think that if it's, when it's all working together, let me tell you, kids know who Jesus is when those things are all working together. So that's church revitalization. Any questions on church revitalization? I've got one more topic, I'm going to talk about church planting in just a minute, but I'm going to take a moment and see if you have any questions. Well, I don't want to tell you right now because there's a quiz about that in just a minute. Yeah, I'll tell you in just a minute. Yeah, we'll get to that one. But there's a quiz on that, so I don't want to give the answer away, all right? Any other questions on church revitalization really quick? Don't everybody speak at once? All right, I'm moving on. Now, we, we have spent a lot of time and energy on this one because you see the dashboards have said, hey, these are, these are tough things. But there's another area that we have in this conference, a lot of, lot of places and where there's not churches. We also have churches that are full on Sabbath morning. And that's a problem as well. It's a good problem to have, but we have said, we need to really think and look at church planting as well, just to be able to reach the many millions of people that live in our territory. And so some people say, well, why are you worried about church planting when you have 45% of your churches that are in decline? Well, let me just tell you a family, little family, just to illustrate that. Because I hear that question a lot, why are we focusing on church planting when you have so many churches in decline? Well, let me tell you something. I went to visit my dad just recently. My dad lives back in Kansas and he's getting up in years, getting a little dementia, not too bad, but you know, he doesn't get around very much. He's, he's failing, just to be honest, he's not doing well, all right? And, you know, that's sad. But on the other end of the spectrum, sometime this month, my daughter is going to have a baby, all right? I'm pretty excited about that, grandbaby number one. My wife who's here with us tonight, she's, she can't pass a baby store without us buying something, right? I mean, you know, it's just, that's just what happens, right? I'm like, I try to run right, run by the baby stores really quick, but it always seems that we end up in there, right? The fact of the matter is, is because my father is ill, I don't discourage my children from having babies. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, yes, I am trying to make sure that my father is well taken care of. And I want to make sure that they, they have the things that they need and, and the best health that they can be in. But I also want my kids to have grandbabies. And that's what happens with our church. We have churches that, yes, we need to focus on them, we need to help them revitalize, we need to help them get on the very best path that we can. But we also want to encourage new churches to be planted. And the reason is, is because, first of all, a lot of the baptisms we get in the world and some of the best discipleship that happens in the world happens in newly planted churches. That's where it happens. You develop new leaders in newly planted churches as well. Some of the, some of the churches that have been planted in the last five years are almost all run by young adults. Almost all of them are run by young adults, in fact, of all the ones that are newly planted in the last five years, all right? So, and, and where they left, those churches have started to rebound and new leaders have stepped in to take some of the places of people who did leave, you see? So we are not saying as a conference that we're not focusing on church revitalization because we put way more effort and time and funds in that area, but we still said, we need to have, we need to plant new churches. And we've been trying to shoot for about three new churches a year. That's what we've been shooting for. So now let's take a, let's take a quiz. How many churches, companies, and groups are there in the Washington Conference, Sven? A, B, C, or D? Anybody have a guess? 104. How many think it's 104? Oh, we have a few. How many think it's 95? We have a few. How many think it's 123? Oh, we got a, huh, you guys, you know, you're shooting big here. How many think it's 200? Hey, way to go. Well, here it is, it's 123, there you go. So, so give yourself an A so far if you got that one. So it's 123 churches. Oh, look at the guy's patting himself on the back right over here. So there we go. All right, next, next question. For the Washington Conference to minister to everyone within its borders, following what the NAD says, the NAD says we should have the minimum of one church for every 25,000 people. How many churches should we have? We have 123, so how many churches should we have if we were going to follow the NAD's metric and dashboard? Okay, he's saying 250 up here. Anybody want to go with 250? All right, there was some, how many people thinks 200? Okay, some people are voting here, some of you are tentative, 150. No takers. Well, here we go. Oh, we got a taker up there. Here it is, it's 200, there we go. So we're, so we have 123, we have a little bit of growth to do, wouldn't you say? That's just to follow the metric of what the NAD says. Now, that's not to say that we're going to stay, hey, we get to 200 and say, we don't need any more churches. We'll continue to grow and frankly, this territory continues to grow as well. All right, next question. In the past six years, how many church plants have there been in the Washington Conference? Anybody want to take a, a guess? Five? Sven says five. Oh, oh ye of little faith. It's 18. We have planted 18 churches in the last six years. So somebody say amen to that, right? And there's, and here's the next question. How many different language groups make up those 18 church plants? How many do you think it is? Six, all right? Somebody say six? Anybody think it's just two? Three? All right, well, here you go, it's, it's eight. Eight different language groups make up those 16 different church plants. The most recent one is a Chinese church plant that is being hived off or being planted and, and mothered, so to speak, by our Kirkland Church in Kirkland, Washington. And, you know, no. The great, the great people of Norway usually speak such good English that they don't need a specific language group. So that is, that is something that happens with Norway. Now, what's interesting, now what's interesting about that is, is that even of these different language groups, and we also have a group that's, doesn't even count in that because we haven't officially recognized them, but the Highline Church has a French-speaking Haitian group that has been meeting there, but it's not really big enough to really qualify it as a group yet, but they're trying to gather some, gather some more people to be able to have a group there in, from Haiti, a French-speaking people. What's really happening in some of these is historically, even the ones that are of a different language, many of them are moving, a, a, after many years, they'll start moving to English, you know, because their second and third generation says, hey, we're more comfortable with English. We like to celebrate our culture. But I mean, some of the two last churches we planted, one of them is called Triumph, one of them is called Refuge. They were both planted by second and third generation Hispanics. It's all done in English. Many of them are Hispanics, but they're inviting their non-Hispanic friends to come. But they're saying, hey, we're really more comfortable in English. We do like our Spanish culture, but they invite. And so, but, and so those are two of the churches. We have two Korean churches that used to be, their, their roots were in Korean churches, but they're English-speaking churches and now they're only about half Korean and the rest are non, are multicultural. So, so that's what's starting to happen, you see, in some of these places that get planted, especially if immigration in those areas starts to slow down, okay? So those are some things that we've been doing in church planting. And I just want to share you, these little black dots that we have up here, the little pushpins are up there. The other, the others are where a lot of our churches are at. And, but the little black dots are areas that we have studied and said, hey, we'd sure like to have churches in those areas. And we have some small groups that are starting to meet in those areas. Issaquah is one of the places that we have, we're working on a group for South Hill as well and a few of these other places. But we're not saying that we would do only those areas. We're just saying those are some real hotspots where there's a huge amount of population that's really not being covered by the Seventh-day Adventist Church. Okay, once again, questions? I would love to hear if you have other areas where you think the focus should be, what you think the biggest need is, or if there's something you say, you know, the conference should just stop doing that, it's not necessary. And I'd love to hear it if there is something out there like that. Just crazy talk. Said as only Tom could say, right? Anybody have a question? Comment? Did I overwhelm you with too much information or not enough? Guess what? Randy, you're up because there's nobody raising their hands. This is Randy Maxwell, our Vice President for Administration. He's going to share a little bit about some of the membership stuff.
All right, yeah, thank you for that, Sven. You're going to like my presentation the best tonight because it's the shortest. So here we go. We're going to just take a look at some numbers that give us a greater look at our membership so that you can get a different view of how our membership is structured. Okay, so we start here. The green is the last year of the previous quinquennium, so that's 2018. And then you can see how the pandemic affected us in 2021, where our membership dropped off by about 300 members. And then we rebounded in 2022, praise the Lord. And at, and this, this number here, the 23,954, is as of the end of the third quarter. So you do not see year-to-date membership, which I'll show you in just a moment. But that is the end of third quarter 2023. We're still headed towards 24,000. Baptisms during that same time period, again, 2018, the last year of the previous quinquennium, 509. 2019 was a banner year. We just about got 600 baptisms. Again, the pandemic had its effect, knocked us down to 311. But notice the trend upward, 311, 364, 449. Then inexplicably, 2023, this year, baptisms took a dive, matching 2020 again. And you say, why is that? Well, again, you're still looking at numbers through the third quarter and there was a lot of evangelistic activity in the fourth quarter. So some of those baptisms and professions of faith are not reflected here. So we expect to see that perform a little better. It may not reach 2022, but it will not be where it is right there. Then the number of churches, now we said we had, how many churches? 123. Wouldn't it be great if we had all 123 reporting baptisms and professions of faith? But we hover in the 70s. And so again, between 2022 and 23, just about flat, 76, 77. But that's going to change at the end of this year. Membership attrition, that's where we lose members by death, missing, or removed. If you look at this, look at what happened to us in 2021. 416 or 418 went missing. We cleaned up our books considerably in 2022. And you can see the missing went almost down to nothing, from 400 down to four. Removed only 21. And then this year, you can see again, the trend is a little better, but we have 166 missing, 138 we lost to death, and 34 removed. There's another way of looking at it. How did we, this is transfer growth. Every year but 2018, we were on the negative side of transfer growth. We lost more members than we took in. But this year, we are actually tend to the good. So for the first time in the last five years, we're on the positive side of that, taking more members in than we lost. So that's a, that's an amen right there. And then this shows the growth rate. How fast are we growing? Again, you can see what happened to us in the pandemic years, 2020, 2021, really bad. We, we were not growing at all in 2021, we regressed actually. But then a tremendous spike, almost by a full percentage point in 2022. And right now, our rate of growth has slowed, .43. So we want to see that again trending upward. But this is just showing the speed of which we're growing, it's a little slower. Uh, this, whoops, went too fast. So here's a little bit of year-to-date, so you can get excited about this. Number of members, right now stands at 24,010 members, all right? We finally cracked the 24,000 barrier, just barely, right? 16,558 families, there you are with the congregations, 123. That breaks down into 96 churches, 15 companies, and 12 groups, all right? And we've added 641, dropped 527, just so that you can see that from year to year. And then this last one, which you cannot see. This is the demographic break ground of our employee diversity within the Washington Conference. So these are our employees. So you can see, the Seventh-day Adventist Church, by the way, is the most diverse Protestant church in the world. In the world. And Washington Conference reflects that diversity. As you can see, we're broken down here by 47.8% is white. And then everything else in the pie is something else. We've got 9.5% Pacific Islander, 21% Hispanic or Latino, 14% Black African-American, and 2% Asian. So you can see the mix there. And then by gender, we're just about 50/50. Just about 50/50. So we're doing well. One, one that I would like to show, and we don't have it, is our age demographic. One, one that I would like to show, and we don't have it, is our age demographic. Because if you walk into the Washington Conference these days, you will perceive a youth movement. We have quite a few, um, young adults in very responsible positions, directorships, and, and so forth. And so, it's a very young conference office. Um, those of you who are at camp meeting this year, um, if you were paying attention, the entire program, the audio, the visual, those running the floor, they were all young adults. They were all young adults. So, we are being very intentional about growing, uh, younger, uh, together, and I believe, I believe that's the final slide, yes. So, are there any questions about membership trends? Yes?
On the very first slide, you said that, um, yes, that membership in 2021 dropped, did you, is that meant attendance or actual membership?
That's actual membership.
So, were people left?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. We have, in fact, I was just reading an article in the Seattle Times, a couple days ago, talking about the numbers of Washingtonians who have left Washington, um, because of politics. And so, there's a great, uh, migration of more conservative-minded people towards more conservative states. And, and that is reflected even in our church membership as well. I have been a trend conservative, and so, um, we did lose some members to other states. It's, I, I did when, uh, at my Renton Church, um, we lost some very prominent families, um, to Idaho, and, uh, there's been a great migration. So, you do see that reflected, uh, in that drop in membership. Alright? Any other questions? Did that answer? Okay. Yes. Yeah, but that's okay, we, we've got five million people here, we've got a lot to work with. We've got a lot to work with. Alright? Any other questions? If not, Jerry, you're up.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Just want to thank you for spending your time with us tonight. I know you've got a lot of fun things going on, I'm sure, but it means a lot to us that, uh, that you've taken the time to be with us tonight. I'm gonna show you a little bit about our, uh, financial operation. There we go. Uh, what I'm gonna show you is, is mostly through the month of September, okay? So, we're gonna take a look at our tithe. Uh, for the month of September, you see the, the month column there, uh, we took in two million one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in tithe, and that was compared with one point six three seven in tithe a year ago. So, that was just a, a blessing of an increase of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars just in the one month of September. Okay? So, the theme, the theme that I'm gonna go with here is blessing. God has blessed us, and He's asked that, uh, that we bless each other, okay? And, uh, the folks of the Washington Conference have certainly done that in their churches and the other ministries we have here in the conference. Uh, but our tithe increase for the month was thirty-one point forty-three percent, and year-to-date, you can see we have seventeen million through September, one hundred eleven thousand, and a year ago, right now, we had fifteen four forty. So, we're ahead by one point six million dollars over a year ago. That's tremendous, and we get excited about that, and we watch that, but the number that I watch even more closely is this one, and this is tithe compared with our budgeted tithe, okay? So, you can see, there's the, the top line is the same, the second line down, the, uh, the budget for September, through September of twenty-three, uh, we were budgeting to receive sixteen million fifty-five thousand dollars, and we have received seventeen one eleven, so we're, we're a little over a million dollars ahead of our budget in tithe, which is just a tremendous blessing. So, now, we're gonna look, uh, where does, where does the Washington Conference stand within this union? Okay? I get a report, all fifty-eight conferences, and there's one mission in Guam, Micronesia, but the other fifty-eight conferences, I get it on our report, but I do, I, I, I can't show you all fifty-eight, the print would be too small. So, we're just gonna look at the six that are in the NPUC, and then, of course, the NPUC and the NAD, and these are ranked by the column all the way on the right, okay? Tithe per capita is a simple calculation of total tithe divided by the membership, okay? And so, through September, uh, you can see the Washington Conference in fifth place out of six in this union, we're at seven hundred and fifteen dollars or forty-one cents per member. And so, what that, what, but you gotta, you gotta keep in mind, um, this also, this includes membership, not attendance, this includes membership, not giving members. Many of our members are children, and they don't, uh, have significant incomes, if they have any. Uh, other, other folks, quite honestly, don't attend, and, uh, many of those that don't attend don't give. But anyway, so we're at seven hundred and fifteen, uh, but we, you can see we have a ten point eight-two percent gain over last year, and everybody in the union has a gain in tithe. In fact, there's only one conference in the North American Division through September that does not have a gain in tithe, and that conference has a less than a half a percent loss, and that's the Rocky Mountain Conference, Colorado, Wyoming. Everybody else has a gain. So, the blessings throughout our church in North America are, are just amazing. So, you can see in the, the aqua-colored line there, North Pacific Union, so far, we have seventy-seven million five hundred twenty-six thousand in tithe. Uh, that's a nine point eight five five percent increase from the year before. Uh, in North America, they're trending again towards a billion dollars in tithe, they have nine hundred and twenty-five through September, and that's nine point six five percent ahead of last year. So, we're only seeing, in just the last few years, these big gains in tithe throughout the division. Every now and again, you know, several conferences will do really well, but division-wide, really since the pandemic, we're seeing large increases. And to me, I just, uh, that, that just makes no sense to me, because in the spring of 2020, what did we do? We shut the doors and told everybody to stay home. And, I'm telling you, in twenty-one, we received more tithe than we ever have received, ever, in the history of this conference. And, uh, we did that largely by not being in our churches. So, I mean, that's, that doesn't make a lot of sense, right? So, there goes Sven. We're done here. But, uh, God has just tremendously blessed, and I know there's a lot of prayers that go into that as well, so. Moving on, we also, you'll know, you'll notice, uh, the Washington Youth Offering is taken in your church every fourth Sabbath of the month, and you can see the things that it goes for are lined up on the left, education, young adults, Sunset Lake Camp Scholarship, Sunset Lake Operating, Pathfinders Adventures, Sunset Lake Cap Capital, Children's and Youth Ministries as well. So, and you can see in the month that those things happen. The biggest thing we do with youth ministry is education, and so they receive six of these offerings out of the year. Uh, the other ones, Sunset Lake gets three, and then the other ones are just kind of a one-off every time. But you can see the, uh, the, the solid lines are the actual dollars that have come in so far. The shaded lines are the budget that we expected. So, this offering, especially in the first four months, performed tremendously well. And then, uh, you know, a couple of the others not doing so well, but lately, uh, in the last August and September, again, it's been performing very, very well against budget. So, so far, we've received a hundred and seventeen, three hundred and, a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars through September, and this is probably about fifteen or twenty thousand dollars ahead of what we budgeted. So, this offering is, is really blessing our youth ministries. Uh, let's take a look at education. So, um, Michelle's gonna tell you the ministry side of it, I'm just gonna count the dollars that, that go to it and whatnot, but, uh, we operate twenty-one schools this year. And, uh, this, this piece of the pie reflects the operation of, of twenty of those schools. Auburn Adventist Academy is not in this, you'll see it on another piece in just a minute, but all of our other schools that are not Auburn Adventist Academy, we spent nine million five hundred thousand dollars last school year. So, this is tracking from July one of twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-three. So, nine and a half million, seventy-nine percent of what we spent on education went to those schools. Uh, Auburn Academy took, uh, eight percent, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in subsidies last year, and then we had, uh, a convention in, in Phoenix for our teachers, happens every five years, so we, we took them, and that's what most of this expense right here is, that's sixty-seven thousand. Uh, we have an office, an education staff, which you'll meet, uh, via a slide here in just a few minutes, uh, and that's their expense. And then we have two universities that we support financially. Of course, one of them's Walla Walla, the other one's Oakwood University in Alabama, Huntsville, Alabama. So, we support both of them, and that was eight hundred and ninety-two thousand. So, that's, that's the whole, uh, education expense right there. So, we're gonna break it down a little bit, and this is gonna get real busy for a second. But if we could concentrate on the twenty-two, twenty-three column, which is the second one in from the left side, that's the most recent school year, and if you want to compare over, we'll hit a few highlights in that comparison, but, but you can see the numbers that were in that pie are in the top, uh, four lines up there. In the total, excluding Walla Walla University and Oakwood University, we spent eleven million one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars last school year for education. So, we're not gonna, we're just gonna set the Walla Walla and Oakwood subsidies aside for a second, but if you take that eleven million one forty-nine, and you divide it by the enrollment of fifteen hundred and forty students, which is what we had last year, the Washington Conference, uh, subsidized each student seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, okay? And then, keep in mind that we subsidize forty percent of the schools. Uh, so if you take the, if you take forty percent out of that, our subsidy is, is actually two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one, okay? Now, these numbers do not reflect what the local schools, they have their own budgets, and they've spent their own money that we don't know about. We know they're doing it, I just don't have access to their records. So, they, uh, they are also, you can add whatever they're spending to these numbers here. But the, the really neat things to watch here is if you look at the enrollment line, fifteen hundred and forty students in the last school year, okay? Moving across to the right, tremendous gain from twenty-one, twenty-two, and that was a great gain over twenty-twenty-one. And then, uh, you know, it was just kinda moving around the other years, but, but something is happening in our schools, and Michelle's gonna tell you about the academics, and, uh, I'll leave you in suspense as to whether our academics are higher or lower than the schools around us, but she- hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars ahead of that expectation. Okay? So, while that number is concerning, this is, September is about the toughest month from a, uh, from a financial statement standpoint of any month in the year, because we've just had all those tremendous expenses in the summertime, and our income is down, so it really reflects in September. Maybe we ought to do this meeting at a different time in the future, so we can have a happier statement here, but, but, uh, anyway, so, you can see in, in, uh, through September of twenty-two, we had a, we had a loss through then of one mi- one million nine hundred and eleven thousand. We finished with a substantial gain, um, on the operation last year, which is good, because we have to have a certain amount of reserves to make this work. So, our people expect to get paid, and we are short three point two million dollars right now, okay? So, this is why we have reserves, they're, they, they get us through, and then when December comes, December is always two, three, maybe even four times the amount of tithe in the month of December, as opposed to any other month, and so we're expecting that, as it usually does, to make up that difference. So, right now, we're in a good place because we're three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars ahead of our budget. So, that is all I have for you tonight, but are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Earlier, up here-
Oh, look at, I don't see any mouse moving.
You have the year-to-date, um, averages, uh, was that per month or per year, the seven hundred and, all those, I think it's your second per capita.
Oh, let's go back to that.
That's a per year, Tim.
Which is not very much.
Per capita, per year.
Was that the one that had all the conferences listed on it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that is through September, that's not just September, that's- Yeah. That's nine months. Now, by, by December thirty-one, that'll be anywhere from twelve hundred to thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars, probably.
So, that's, is that per year, so that's pretty low.
It is, but you just factor in, this was not presented, but there's one thing that we are number one in the union, we're in first place, and that is attendance, percentage of membership and attendance. Should I tell them the fun number that that is, Doug?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're number one at thirty-nine percent of our membership attending church.
Did you catch that, thirty-nine percent?
We're better than any other conference in this union. And so, Tim, the belief is that the folks that aren't in the place, generally speaking, are not contributing. Uh, you've got children, you know, you're not, I mean, we're, we're delighted that we have children on our records, but I mean, that's a factor in, uh, in, in this right here. And quite frankly, we're, we're in fifth place out of six in this union, and I don't know what's- And I don't know what's going on in the other conferences, but I do know, and we talk about this, we've got membership that we don't know where they are or where they live. And so you just saw on Randy's slide, that one year twenty-one where they cleared a lot of those names. And uh, I mean, none of us really like to do that, but in reality, if we don't know who these people are or where to even find them, should we do s- what's that? Yeah, maybe so. Maybe so. Anyway, uh, yes, back to back. You know, I don't because I don't have that information. We don't age-based giving demographics. We don't have the records from the local churches. So we don't know who's giving or how much or anything. We don't have names of anybody. We just get a, just a, a report from the church itself. But you know, the local church, if you ask your local church treasurer, they could probably come up with something like that for you. Okay. Well, hey, oh, one more, yes. The which one? Okay. Was that the, the bar graph one? Is that this one? This is our subsidy per student at each one of the schools. Okay? And it's not that Bakerview and Cedar Brook and PSAA are our favorites. Because we subsidize every school the same, that's a reflection of their teaching staff compared with their enrollment. Okay? Does that answer your question? Okay. All right, well, for more on education, we've got Michelle.
Thank you very much, Jerry. So this is my, um, my family and I moved in here and I'm gonna try this word. Um, right when the last quin- quinium was there. Last night, I just stumbled all over that word. And so um, I had to get it out right away when I started here. So, my name is Michelle Walker and I just wanna add real quickly, Jerry and these guys are a lot of graphs and numbers. Mine are more stories because we're education and we're all about the stories. But there is definitely a quick story that I need to share. And that is when we had COVID hit um, for many years, the conference met on Mondays for book club. And so then when a COVID hit, we were really worried that we would have to let some personnel go. And I know that that was something that was really weighing hard on our leaders here, all of us. And so we doubled our efforts for prayer. And so Monday and Wednesday, um, as many of that would like to in the building, we study a book on prayer. We read and we pray specifically for the finances. And so God does do greater things. So with all these graphs and charts, the greatest thing is God does bless. And we really are very intentional about trying to make sure that we kneel before the altar often. So. Um, once again, my name is Michelle Walker and our full fork, focus of what we do is to train up a child in the way he should go. When he was old, he'll not depart from that. As a recent um, teacher, that's at Orcas Island and helping one of our, um, the kids that are there. So that is the whole reason that we do what we do. So, once again, my name is Michelle Walker. Um, I joined about five years ago, the staff here as associate superintendent with Craig Mattson. So if you were here at the last quin- quinium, you would have been, um, Craig would have been up here. And um, and then about two years ago now, they asked me to step in uh, for VP for Education, which has been quite an honor. So, this is very much of a team effort. I work with Ron Jacobin, Associate Superintendent, and our Wilma Bing, who is here tonight as part of the team. And we too are a very praying department. We cannot, or would we ever wanna say that we could lead or guide our schools and our principals and our teachers without constantly saying, Lord, what do you want us to do today? So. As um, the gentleman mentioned, we have twenty-one schools and growing. Since the last time that we were here sharing, we have reopened Bakerview. That was about three years ago. Last year, we had um, a miracle story. Edumclaw has a school. We have quite a few schools that are around here. Tacoma's, um, Tacoma has a school out there. Um, Edumclaw had a shell of a school. Um, Yelm is sitting there with a school. And so it's really hard and really sad when we see these schools that are empty because we know that that is where Jesus could be shared every day to kids. And so we had a teacher that actually um, heard about that we were opening Edumclaw called. And we had to actually go to Board of Ed. It was opposite. And we said, we have a teacher that's willing to come. The board knows that she is the one. So we voted after we started talking to the teacher because the Lord just opened that door. So it has been amazing. We also have the very first nature school, um, the first NAD Adventist um, nature school opening next fall in, here in Tacoma. We don't have a location yet. Um, and so, but we do have a teacher flying in in about two weeks. So we're really excited about that. And we are in talks um, with another school here in Tacoma to kind of reopen. So that's four schools in five years. So that is tremendous growth. So God is blessing as well. We could not, and we would not do this without the educators that we have. We have a hundred and twenty-five dedicated educators. With that, add another people like Siri and other people that serve in our schools. And we have probably close to three fifty, wouldn't you say? Another couple hundred that are come daily to work with the children, your children, your grandchildren, your, your family here. And so it's great. So, this is a picture of us out at Rosario last spring. And so we try to do whatever we can to try to pour into our teachers to make them feel special and appreciated for all the work that they do. So we have Tom Kennedy here from um, Olympia. Thank you, Tom, for all that you do. Yeah, we can woo-hoo him. Woo-hoo! And um, Siri, who I know I've seen many, many times at um, Olympia as well. Woo-hoo! Any other one missing? So anyway, we, we do have some amazing teachers and some amazing schools right here in the Lacey area. Enrollment, we had last year, as they shared, we went up and over um, fifteen hundred. We've been praying for a long time for more than twen- to break that twenty-four thousand mark for membership. We've been praying really hard to break the fifteen hundred mark. And last year we did at fifteen oh four, dropped a little bit. Um, this year coming in at fourteen eighty-four, depending upon when you take, whether it's opening enrollment, closing enrollment. Um, Doug always laughs at us because he says, how many students do you have? And Doug, what do we say when you say that? We say that?
I'll get back to you.
I'll get back to you. Well, and he's like, it's just like counting cattle. You need to know like my granddad did with the cattle. You have to know how many are in the, you know, in the pen. Well, it's not so easy with schools because kids are coming, they're going, they're leaving. And so it just depends. So we are right at this year, right at the fourteen eighty-four mark, trending up to that fifteen hundred as well. So. Jerry um, kind of did a little teaser for me. So thank you, Jerry. And that is how do our kids do? We know that we bring Jesus to them every day. We know that we have worship with them. We have baptisms taking place. But academically, we wanna make sure that we are a schools of excellence. So as you can see, and I wish I had a pointer here, but um, it starts at the seventy at top and then sixty and then fiftieth. So about the third line from the top is a fiftieth percentile. Yeah? Well, where am I? Oh. Yeah, kind of. Okay, there he is. Yeah. Oh, there we go. It doesn't reflect on the screen. Oh, I like it. About right there. Okay, about thirds from the top. But I like the way you're thinking. Thank you. Um, and that is a fiftieth percentile. And with the exception of a few, uh, math, we're doing very well then. Reading, we're struggling. COVID was really hard on our students. It was a hard on all of us, but our students really suffered. So we are finding with all of our schools and classrooms, we have gaps that we're having to fill in. And so we are still above the fiftieth reading, for reading and also for language as well. And some of them, you can tell the longer they're in our school system, the higher they are closer to seventieth percentile. So really proud of our academics within our schools and our teachers. So. Speaking of COVID, you saw the dip that it took in membership. You saw that many of the doors, um, they were talked about, the doors of the churches closing. We did not close our doors for too long. That is why we did get such an influx coming in of students because public schools just shut down. Remember that for the rest of the time? Well, we took maybe a week or two off. We pivoted. We did some remote learning. And we were making sure that our kids were still being taught academically and still hearing about Jesus every day, whether that was a computer, whether that was coming in with different cohorts or coming in six feet apart. But I'm so proud of our teachers and we are very aware of the long-term impact on student learning. We did a lot of mask wearing for a while. Wasn't really popular, but we live in the state of Washington. And as they mentioned, we did lose a few families as well that did not want their kids to wear masks and they stayed home where they moved. So. Yep. During that time, um, we were given something from the state, the state of Washington. And you know, there are a lot of funds out in the state of Washington. There's Title One funds, Title Three funds. And traditionally, we have stayed away from state granted money because we don't want them to come in and have oversight with our curriculum and start telling us what, when and what to teach. So we were offered something called ENS um, grant. It was Emergency Assistance for Non-Public Schools. So they came to us through WIFIS, which is Washington Federation of Independent Schools and said, hey, you know, your schools could get over a million dollars if you'd like to. So we took it to Andre at the union office. Our lawyer said, what do you think? Because we don't want a dime of this if they're gonna come in and tell us what to teach. The Lord will provide. Well, it was ma- it was designed for non-public schools. So we joined with all the other non-public schools and we were awarded um, over one point two million dollars. What this, I know, praise God. And what this allowed um, our schools to do is, for example, um, Olympia, forty thousand dollars. Tom, what would that do to your budget? Forty thousand dollars. What did it do to your budget? What did it buy? Yeah. And it was meant to help out through COVID and it's helping out even after. So, yep, it was about two and a half, three years. It's done now. But our schools worked really hard and our team works really hard to make sure that we were able to fill out the forms, get the money, keep the receipts and that sort of thing. So, um, what a blessing that was. So. A couple of things that we do every year, and that is outdoor school. It just happened in October and oh, what fun. Such a great time. The girl on the right had an opportunity to fish and they, we restock it right before they go. So the chances of catching a fish is really, really high. So it's very rewarding. And so we had so much fun. And then the weather did always cooperate with us, as you can see on the left, but as you can see, the smiles are still there. Our students and our teachers, our principals are so resilient and just so happy to be um, moving forward with activities. Another thing we do each year that this, um, some of those six um, offerings go for, those youth offerings that are generously given to education is Arts Fest. And that's coming up in Feb- February. Is that right, Wilma? March, like March one or something, right? Like the first Friday, I think in March. And we bring students from all around. And this was the last event we had in twenty twenty. We had five hundred students there in February, right before the world shut down and COVID hit like a week later. So it was incredible. We got through that. We only paused one year. And then after that, we were back. Some of them, some of us were masked, but we're back this last year. And that is just a wonderful time. So, if you are not busy, the first Friday, I think it's about six o'clock, six-thirty in the evening, we'll make sure we announce it in your bulletin. Come join and see several hundred kids play and give praise to the Lord together. It is phenomenal to watch. So it's, thank you for asking. Auburn Adventist Academy. Yeah. So we'll make sure that we get it into all of the bulletins. So. Really fun to see. This is a group. I'm here with some teachers um, at Rosario as well. And as I'm sure you've heard, we have a teacher shortage. Raise your hand if you've heard we have had it, that worldwide, we have a teacher shortage. Yeah. People realize that for the amount that we can pay them, for as much work as it is and with all the learning gaps they have, it is just really hard. It's a hard profession. And so um, praise God, we've not had to close any schools due to lack of teachers, find teachers. In fact, we're opening schools and we've been able to staff all of ours. So we are very intentional with our teacher shortage. Um, Wilma and Doug um, came back through um, Lincoln, this is last um, month. And they um, talked to some of the teachers, pastors that were there. And I am heading down um, to Southern and to Oakwood and to um, Andrews and to Southwest. And so we are starting to see finally a few more teach, a few more teachers in the teaching field in the um, educational program. And of course, we will all be down at the end in Walla Walla in January, looking for teachers as well. So we do all we can for recruitment and development because the teachers we have, we wanna keep them here. And we wanna make sure that we do all we can to support them. So one of our taglines is, we wanna do all we can to support and empower. And that is our mission and all that we do. Another teacher development that we've done recently is um, it's called Standards-Based Learning. And we are moving forward with that. It's kind of the way the NAD has been going, NPUC is going. Wilma has taken that on. Thank you, Wilma, for doing such an amazing job. She put together this professional learning community. We have several of our schools that only have one or two teachers. It is really hard to collaborate with your, with yourself, you know? So, and so what we did is Wilma has gathered all of our small schools together. And we have a chance for them to work with other people that are similar um, grade levels or other one-teacher schools. So that was really neat to see, just a happy chatter. And it was very fun because as they're chattering, talking, Wilma, Ron and I are like, isn't this nice? It's almost like our classes, you know, getting along, meeting one another. And they are stronger and better together when they're able to work together with that. So. Doug mentioned that our kids need to hear about Jesus Christ. You guys agree with that? Yeah. So ways that they do that is right here in this church. I know you guys have a very active church, Sabbath school, Pathfinder's, Adventurers, other ways. Another way is right in the desks that we're in. So they asked a few years ago, we were noticing that a lot of our desks were filled by non-Adventist, non-Christian families. And so we started looking, and here's a few statistics. Skagit, Peninsula and Auburn, they have between twenty and thirty percent of their students come from non-Adventist families. Or non-Adventist. Lewis County Northwest Christian, forty to sixty percent, almost ha- about half of their student body is non-Adventist. Do you agree that that's a mission field? Every day, every day for hours. And here's your very own Olympia, Orcas, Kitsap, Grace Harbor and Cypress, seventy to seventy-five. Three quarters of the kids that Siri worked with for years were from non-Adventist families. Three quarters of the students in the upper grade that Tom works with every day are from non-Adventist families. Amazing mission field we have. And it's even more Cedar Brook, Polesbo and Shelton, ninety-five to a hundred percent of the students that come there. The students are non-Adventist and the families are non-Adventist. But that doesn't end there. Tom, I'm gonna put you on the spot. What did you have the privilege of helping out with this summer? What did you do? In the lake. Involved a robe, a baptismal robe. Yeah. Yep. And there was a pastor there too. So it was all legal and everything. Yeah. Yeah, Sven was there. So just so you know, so don't, don't, don't get me afterwards. So, so, Sven and Tom had the privilege of baptizing one of her, the Adventist students that said, please, I wanna know Jesus Christ because of what you taught me, Mr. Kennedy, in the classroom. Just, that's the reason we're here. We do good things in our schools. We, we are above average with our academics. We do great things, conference-wide. But the greatest thing we do, what do you think the greatest thing is that we do greater things? It is the baptism. When a student comes up to Mr. Kennedy and says, would you please baptize me? On the right-hand side, that is a young lady from Cedar Brook. And Cedar Brook had a hundred percent non-Adventist. Shelton, thank you. Shelton, on the right-hand side, had a hundred percent non-Adventist. Well, that's not true anymore. That student is now an Adventist. Our, and dad, and dad. And that was coming as a team effort from President Bing and also the pastor there worked together. He um, did Evangelistic Crusade. The pastor leaned in and we have teachers out there that talk about Jesus Christ every day. And so that is the greatest thing that we can do. Um, at this time, here's, this is a group that I was up with and this is a group from um, up north. And the greatest thing we do,
And the greatest thing we do is those smiles, meeting Jesus. "Suffered little children, to come unto me, forbid them not." Questions you have? Wow. Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
I know that Northwest Christian, just because they have the help and the ability to do that, and they have the enrollment, they have over two hundred right now, so they have the finances to do that. Couple of things is, I don't see that happening on our smaller schools. Our larger schools, yes. In fact, Walla Walla is being very intentional about their SPED program. And we now, if you work for, if you have a contract as a teacher, you can go to summer school in the summer for free. Walla Walla has changed it, that if you're a SPED master's program, you can take it year-round so you can get through faster. So we are having, I think we have about four or five that have graduated or in the process of graduating from SPED. So what our hope is, is that we can combine together and do some type of support. So yes, is it fast? No. Is it enough to meet every child's need? No. We don't bill ourselves as special education schools because we just don't have the training. But we are definitely realizing that there's a need, especially with mental health and all the gaps that kids have. So I don't know, did that answer your question? We're heading there. We're heading there.
I still love our people on our campus. They ask me, "Do you have any kids?" And I'm like, "Sure." Right. Right, right.
Right. And that's a great question. We don't know where all of them are going. We have a hard time getting data when we try to reach out to the churches and saying, "Where are all your kids going?" Because obviously, some of these, like Cedar Brook and also Shelton, there's not large churches that have a lot of kids this age. Would you say that? Is that correct for some of these small?
Shelton, for example, is very few kids in Shelton.
Mm-hmm. Right, right. And so, but we are researching, and we hope to get more statistics. Where are, because we don't want, obviously, we don't want to become a mission field. I mean, Ellen G. White says that our schools are two-part. One is to be a safe haven for our own children. The other is to be a mission field. So we don't want to make sure that we're so focused on mission field that we're not providing that safe haven for our own Adventist children. And so that is why our bigger groups like Buena Vista and Auburn Adventist Academy, they only have maybe thirty percent. The rest are Adventist, seventy percent. But some of our smaller areas is where we start getting at more of the community kids. So, right. Right. Do you have ideas that we, how we can be more intentional to get our, more of our Adventist kids in our church schools?
I have a presentation I would have to take down and spend with the director of every outside. Do you want someone else to help you out in detail? You know, both have to be meet your needs or get you there. I think you'll come.
Connect them with you. Right. I think that's a great idea. And Tom, that's a great idea. We meet at least four times a year, Principals Council. And so let's bring that together, Wilma and Tom and I. Let's talk about how we might be able to ask our principals, "Can you go into your churches, find out who is not coming?" So, Wilma?
I also see it in most churches in January, where a local faith leader went after that, and that was actually a position of the church, where they, their job was to go around to families and say, you know, "If you want to go, we want to make it possible." So, you know, I think it's on the local congregation and all of that.
I agree.
I don't think we see the focus in the focus that we did thirty years ago on education. And I think that needs to be turned into priority from the top now.
Yeah. No, I agree. And we, we actually, the pastors meet a couple of times a year in their January in-service. I know Wilma and I went, and they gave us time to do a presentation, talking to pastors, sharing Adventist education, saying, "How can we help partner with you to kind of bridge the gap between the school and the church?" So, no, I agree. Well, thank you guys very much.
There's one other factor that you see sometimes happening within Adventist congregations at least, is that, and not even just Adventist congregation, but there's a fairly large homeschool movement that is taking place out there as well. And let's not, and while we would love to see everybody in our church schools, let's not discount the fact that that's also Christian education. And there's ways to, there's ways to have, I know that other, some schools have a collaborative arrangement with those who are in their area, that, "Hey, if you want to bring your kid to math class, or want to bring them to music class, or whatever." And so there's ways that you can work cooperative with, cooperatively with them, but they may not figure into the FTEs, the count of your school, but they're in your community. So that's happening both within the church and outside the church as well, as far as, as far as homeschool movement is there. So, yes, sir. Good to see you, Sonny.
I think when I see several families in our area, it's the uncertainty of financial situation in the world. And to send their kids to awkward or wherever the kids depend, the financial thought is just terrible. And so in our area, we have a little town, you know, Adventist school, and we go to their tent. And I see some of the families with their kids are going to be, you know, start with a pastor and call. And they're going out just to, I mean, these are, the families that I see are solidly based at.
Sure, that's right.
In one denomination or whatever. And it's just the fact that the extent of it just scares the family, the whole day like that, so to speak, because, you know, there are ways to work around it, and I understand that.
Correct.
So it's hard to convince them sometimes, you know, how, you know, there's stress under it.
Right. Yeah, that's very true, Sonny, in that, you know, there's no doubt that that's about it. One statistic that I do want to share, though, that I think, you know, we have the academics that we shared, and, you know, it's interesting that reading is kind of down, that Michelle pointed out. Fact is a matter is, is reading is down across everywhere because people, our kids aren't reading. They're TikToking and all of those other things, and they're just not reading books anymore. But here's something that we, that has been shown statistically over and over and over again. And so I try to remind parents this when I say, "There are," as you said, Sonny, "there's places to work around. There's ways to have partnerships with the local congregations, with, you know, that type of thing, to help people get in school." But here's statistically what has happened, and they can prove it over and over and over via statistics, is that the longer a kid is in the denominational system, the more likely they are to stay a Seventh-day Adventist Christian. And so I always tell people, I says, you know, if you want, there's no guarantees. Don't get me wrong. There's kids that leave the church all the time. I don't get, you know, that's, that's true, that have been through all the whole time. But if you're going to go from a statistical point of view, and you're saying, "Hey, I want to give my child the very best chance to stay a Christian, a Seventh-day Adventist Christian, then this is what I'm going to do." And I think that if that is a partnership with the local school, the local church, as well as the parent, who, yes, it will be a sacrifice. But that is statistically something that they've done study after study of that, and that's true across ethnicities. And I mean, they even did the study in Indonesia. And the reason I was interested in Indonesia is because Wilma and I served there in Indonesia a number of years ago. And so I just happened to read that. It's like they had the same study done there, you see? So, so yes, it is, it is tough sometimes. But I tell you, I think that we have to sometimes look at it from eternity's perspective and not just from the immediacy of my billfold. So just my humble opinion. Yes, ma'am? You saw already that that is happening. We have Facebook ads that go out and different things like that. You know, Auburn Adventist Academy has thirty-some students from other countries, you know? And we baptize people that come from totally secular, non, you know, Buddhist, whatever, that, you know, non-Christian faiths that we baptize every year, even at Auburn Adventist Academy. So that's what helps plus up the enrollment a little bit there. Yeah. Are we going into other churches to invite them? Okay, thank you. Most churches don't let us do that. So we, we have, we have tried, and especially in the Auburn area, some churches will say, "Hey, yeah, come on up." And they've, they've had other churches that have visited, other pastors have visited Auburn Adventist Academy and stuff like that, and have collaborative arrangements with them, but it's not as common, you know? But we have advertised in, you can do targeted Facebook ads, like, for example, you know, I'll pick on Northwest Christian. They have a number of other denominations. They're actually right next door to, what's it, Cascade Christian. I mean, their school is right next door to Cascade Christian, which is one of the larger schools, non-denominational school systems in that area. And, but yet they have tons of people that come there. And I know that, what did we say? They baptized sixty-five people so far? And a lot of those are parents and students that have been coming to Northwest Christian. So they're using it, truly using it as a mission field. Yes, sir?
One of them, they're in Shelton, they have a relationship with another Christian school. And they have all of our registration materials.
Yep.
And they're more established than we are in this work program, all these things that parents have been looking for. They fill up all of a sudden, easy to serve.
Yeah.
Because that school is referring to us.
Can't, can't take anymore.
Last evening, we were a part, and all the churches are good. Last evening, we were a part of our city.
Praise God. Yeah. Yeah. For example, right now, at Auburn Adventist Academy, they do a J2B, Journey to Bethlehem, which is, you know, about five thousand people, I think, go through there. I was working at it on Thursday night, and, you know, I was handing out brochures all the time for different schools, all twenty-one of our schools, because I was, you know, I was meeting people from Lacey, from Olympia, from Chehalis. And I was, you know, Michelle had developed a little thing. I was handing those out all over the place, saying, because they were saying, "What about that school across the street?" I'm like, "Well, let me tell you about that school, but let me tell you also about these other schools." And so, and many of them are saying, "Oh, yeah, we go to such and such a church." But, so that we do work on those, but as far as actually getting up on Sabbath Monday, Sunday morning, sorry, got the wrong day. Getting up on Sunday morning to some of those other Sunday churches, that doesn't happen a lot. So any other questions? On any topic before we close? You've seen four different presentations about different aspects of the church, what's happening in the Washington Conference, and we're here to answer questions. We'll hang out afterwards around the hot chocolate bar or whatever's back there and spend some time with you. Thank you for doing that. And thank you once again, Pastor Sven, for having us. Thank you, Tim, up there in the sound, for taking care of us as well. And I'm just going to ask, Michelle, why don't you stand up here and have closing prayer for us, and then we'll stand around and answer any questions you might have individually.
I'm a teacher. You guys have been sitting a long time. Let's stand. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you so much for the friends that came out to join with us to here today, to celebrate the last five years and the growth and all sort of vision and plan and think about how we can do better and how we can look for even greater things. Be with us now as we visit a little longer and as we part. Please continue to bless our families, and thank you so much that we have the privilege to serve you.